Good evening, everyone. My name is Garth Riddeland. I'm co-chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to welcome everybody here. Thank you to the candidates for running, for your willingness to put yourself out there and go through this process of running for representing your section of the city for city council. Before we get started, I'd just like to mention that due to the number of school board candidates, we would typically have had a forum for school board candidates as well. And because there was such an overwhelming number of people, there were 23 candidates this year, and I'd like to encourage everybody to make sure that they go out to the chamber website at gochamber.org for our Grand Forks Chamber of Commerce. And if you want to do a Google search, you can find it with 2022 school board, you know, Grand Forks School Board Candidates. Thirteen of the 23 people who are running have submitted some videos to us, and that's uploaded on the chamber's YouTube channel. So we'd encourage you to go out there and take a look at those videos to try to make a choice for yourself as to the candidates that you would like to support. So tonight, we are featuring the candidates for the Grand Forks City Council. The format we're going to follow tonight is that each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement followed by questions submitted in advance. The questions will be screened for duplication, and we will remove any editorial comment. At the end of the questions, each candidate will have an opportunity for a one-minute closing statement. As we get started here, we do have one unopposed candidate. We have Dana Sandy, who is representing Ward Six. As is tradition, we do invite our unopposed candidates to offer some comments at the start of the forum. Welcome to Dana, and please get us started with some comments.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Barry. Garth, thank you for having me tonight. I very much appreciate being given the opportunity to say a few words tonight. And a sincere good luck to all of the candidates running in Words Two and Four. I know that sticking your neck out, raising your hand, is not easy, and I appreciate the people that do so. I had a reminder today at about noon that the forum was tonight, and I spent some time this afternoon thinking about what I would say. And so I actually went back, and I found the statement that I made when I was running unopposed in 2010, the first time I ran for election. And I read through it and thought, well, I updated it a little bit, but it's still valid. It's essentially still valid today, so I thought I'd go back 12 years ago. Good evening. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Barry and the chamber for having me today. I'm Dana Sandy, and I'm running for a city council seat in Ward Six, which was currently held by Art Bachan, who had very large shoes to fill. Art was a great man, and he's still in our community today, and I really appreciate his leadership. For those of you that don't know me, I did grow up in Grand Forks. I graduated from Setville High School in 1991, last class of the Redskins. And then I attended UND, where I received a Bachelor's of Science in Mathematics with minors in both Statistics and Economics. After working a variety of professional jobs, I decided to continue my education at UND, where I received a Master of Business Administration with an emphasis in finance and economics. The fine education that I got at the University of North Dakota lent me the opportunity to move to Fargo, where I led a sales team for a software company, which was eventually in the Forbes Fortune 400. While in Fargo, I met my wife, my wife for 20 years now. At the time, it was eight. Seventeen years ago, which it was five, seventeen years ago, we were blessed with our twins, Clarkson, Willis, and Stella Jo, both who are named after Meghan and my grandparents. We did move back to Grand Forks shortly thereafter, because we knew Grand Forks would be a great place to raise a family, and I still feel like it is. Currently, which is still true, currently, I work in business development for the UND Aerospace Foundation. In that role, I manage the business side of some of our international pilot training contracts. I also sell custom software systems, curriculum development, and jack-of-all-trades for the Odegaard School of Aerospace Sciences. We sell training systems and software to other flight schools, to aircraft manufacturers, both locally and across the globe, as well as to the United States Air Force. Prior to the city council, I started my volunteering role in 2007 as a director for the Greater Grand Forks Convention and Visitors Bureau, where Julie Rig taught me a whole bunch about being a director. And I served there for four years. I was subsequently appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2008, where I served for five years, including as secretary for two years. During my 12 years on the council, which this is amazing to me, it's been 12 years, my various roles have been, I've been a 911 authority, board director, a director of the Grand Forks Airport Authority, a director of the Grand Forks Economic Development Corporation, a member of the Grand Forks County's Board of Health. I've been chairman of the Grand Forks Grow Fund, chairman of the Finance and Development Committee, I've been president of the Grand Forks Jobs Development Authority, and as most of you know, I've been president of the Grand Forks City Council for the last 10 years. Some actual fun facts about me is I've been a member of the Grand Forks Curling Club since 1979. I'm a three-time North Dakota State High School curling champion. I'm a six-time North Dakota State Junior Curling Champion. And I actually was a member of the inaugural college curling national championships, where with Brady Clark and my other friends, we won the first college national championship trophy curled in Madison, Wisconsin. Enough about me, and I'm half done. Sorry I'm going so long. There are many current, this is again going back 12 years, there are many current issues pertaining to the health and well-being of the Grand Forks residents. Some issues will be difficult and have a wide variety of opinions, such as how will we handle the proposed city budget shortfall, which with the help of Kurt, Doug, and Hal, we actually did it by managing our spending. The necessity of and funding for a new water treatment plant, which we actually accomplished. It was paid by state funding and water rates. A new library, which we didn't build a new library, but we used the resources of the community to do a fantastic remodel. A South End fire station, which we actually prepaid with mills that have subsequently come off. Of course, property taxes, which are an ongoing discussion. And oddly enough, my last bullet was a South End bid in Grand Forks that is currently an ongoing discussion. It has been for 12 years, and we need to figure that out. However, I believe that the time other opportunities exist, some which are rigorous and being pursued locally, which can be of great benefit to our community. For example, I believe we should revisit the opportunity to better share resources with East Grand Forks with the intention of reducing expenses for both cities. I believe we should look to expand our economic development incentives. Although I'm a supporter of bringing new manufacturing to Grand Forks, I also believe we need to offer support to help current Grand Forks businesses expand, and I also believe we need to do a better job of recruiting new retail businesses to the greater Grand Forks area. I believe the Alaris Center in the Ralph are two of the tremendous assets of our community. Marketing the city's assets by the underfunded Greater Grand Forks Convention and Visitors Bureau will continue to drive tourism in our community and bring much-needed retail tax dollars. The explosion of the unmanned aircraft industry, coupled with the expanded UND Unmanned Aircraft Systems Center of Excellence, has put the University of North Dakota and Grand Forks at the center of the UAS universe. The new businesses that come to town to be part of this growing industry will be a tremendous source of revenue and community growth for our city. Other amenities, such as the new airport terminal, which was built, will give the Grand Forks better standing with major airlines and make recruiting another airline easier, which it certainly didn't, but that was a great dream at the time. Lastly, I believe the city of Grand Forks and UND should continue to collaborate and explore other areas where they can work together. The collaboration between the city and UND only makes our community better. I feel like I did a pretty good job 12 years ago. So in conclusion, I'm a firm believer, this is where I got snarky. In conclusion, I'm a firm believer in letting your actions speak for themselves. Therefore, I will not tell you that I will be a great council person, and I will not tell you I will today. I will tell you that I'll listen to the opinions of others. I'll form my own opinions based upon those facts, and I'll act in the way that I feel is best for our community. Thank you all. And oh, and by the way, my wife tells me that people don't like my snarky humor, so I'm sorry about that. Thank you for letting me say a few words today. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your service over the last 12 years. Since Dana's running unopposed, he will, he has the easy part. He gets to make a statement and then kind of take off for the night. So we are up to our opening statements, of which you each will get two minutes. We'll start with Ward Four, and we'll just go from left to right, and then we'll move to Ward Two. So you'll each get two minutes to give an opening statement. We'll go ahead with Tricia Lunskey from Ward Four, candidate.
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here. I'm excited to try something new. This is definitely out of character for me. So I've been in Grand Forks for 20 years. 20 years ago, the Ralph Ingleston Arena hired me to come for three months to get all their digital media running. After three months, they offered me a full-time job. I stayed here for a couple of years, planning to go back to Minneapolis, where I ended up meeting my husband, and 20 years later, I'm still here. I later left the Ralph, and I started Reeves Media and Photography. I thought that would be a great job to have with young kids, until I realized weddings are on weekends, and people work during the day, so they want photographs at night. So I ended up selling Reeves Media and Photography, and I became a partner with my husband at HB Sound and Light. I've been there for 16 years. We have created the Greenway Takeover Festival. I'm pretty proud of the community festival we've created. I'm also the secretary of the DDA. I do have two teenagers, so I'm trying to learn how to speak teenager. That's been exciting, and I just really appreciate this opportunity. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Tricia. We will hear from Harry Samuelson next, Ward Four candidate.
Thank you. My name is Harry Samuelson. I'm glad to have this opportunity, come in and address some of these issues and talk to everybody that I can. I came to Grand Forks in 96 for a job. They got transferred here for a job. And after the flood, that kind of went south, like a lot of other things have gone south, and we've been struggling to get around it. I ended up going to UND, got a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering, took some trips to the sandboxes a couple of times, worked for some trucking companies here in town, and eventually settled in after my last trip at Thomas Diesel. When Larry died, and it got transferred over to Nelson's International, I've stayed on with that. So I've just been a diesel technician for quite a long time, mechanic for a very long time. My son is 22, so he's out of the house. I don't have to worry about trying to talk to him, at least, but now at least he wants to talk. Otherwise, I bought my house in 2015 in the near south side. Been working on it slowly but surely, trying to make it a little bit nicer, a little bit better. Every time I've ever left Grand Forks, I just keep coming back, because it's such a wonderful place. And I hope to try to make this place a wonderful place for everybody else.
Thank you, Harry. We'll hear next from Ward Johnson from Ward Four.
Hi, my name is Ward Johnson. I would like to echo the sentiments thanking the chamber for taking time and resources to put on this public forum. I think it's really important that our voices get heard and people get to know us, so I'll get right into that. I, like Dana, was born in Grand Forks back in 1960. My parents were both UND students. I ended up moving around with the parents, graduated from high school in Bismarck, and then I was back to UND, which is where I would have liked to have stayed. I neglected to mention that in 1978, I enlisted in the North Dakota Army National Guard as a combat field medic. They had great educational programs, so I thought that was a great way to get my college paid for, and it was. I stayed in college at UND for a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and a Juris Doctorate. My mom used to pray that I would just finish school when I was in high school, and then she told me she started praying that I would just finish school and get out and start working, which I did eventually. So I graduated from law school in 1988. I was a partner with Kevin Spath, John Tealyn, Don Deerestein. Judge Tealyn is now a judge in town here. We bought the Hanson and Anderson Funeral Home and turned that into a law firm, and John actually lives there right now. It's a beautiful building. So I was off to the races, practicing law with Kevin, John, and Don, and get a call from my commander in the North Dakota Army Guard that I've got a report for activation the next day. And of course, I was, I had a divorce that whole week, so I got him to give me a couple of extra days. But anyway, I was off to Operation Desert Storm, where I lived in the Rub al Kali Desert for about eight months. So then, upon redeploying back to Grand Forks, I started up my law practice again. That went on well. In 96, I bought the Riverview Center. Then in 98, I bought, oh no, I bought the Mill Square Building in 96, Riverview Center in 98, moved the operations of the law firm over in 2003, and that's where the law firm's been ever since. Once again, went on and on, got activated again in 2004, and I guess I can end right there. All right.
Thank you, Ward. We're going to move over to Ward Two candidates. We'll start with Rebecca Wasowski.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Rebecca Wasowski. I was born and raised in Grand Forks, more specifically Ward Two. I attended local public schools and graduated from the University of Minnesota with a degree in agriculture business, and I currently work in global sales at LM Windpower. I have three daughters. They keep me on my toes, to say the least. As a working mother and homeowner, I understand the importance of a safe and affordable community. I had no plans of running for city council at the end of 2021, but due to the lack of candidates and not finding one who aligns with my political and ethical views, I felt it was my obligation to not just sit back and complain, but to stand up for what I feel is right. I am not a politician. I don't have a degree in political science, and I do not have a three-point priority plan. I will admit, I have a lot to learn. I am a God-fearing patriot who stands for the flag and believes it is time for ordinary citizens to take back not only this council, but this country. If elected, my top priority will be representing the constituents of my ward, as well as citizens of Grand Forks. I promise that I will hold true to my values and fight for what is right. At the end of the day, I have nothing to gain from being elected besides helping to create and mold a better, greater Grand Forks for myself, my children, and the citizens of this city.
Thank you, Rebecca. Matthew Turnus is next with our final introduction from Ward Two.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this and for everyone here today. Thank you for being here, to those watching. I hope you enjoy the conversation. I'm looking forward to it. My name is Matthew Turnus. I'm running to represent Ward Two on the Grand Forks City Council. I work at the Community Violence Intervention Center as a prevention and education specialist, and as an assistant speech coach at East Grand Forks Senior High School. In addition to that, I serve on a few boards, the Greater Grand Forks Young Professionals, and the Greater Grand Forks Interagency Forum, to name a few. I have a degree in political science, as aforementioned. And, you know, I came to Grand Forks, I came here in August of 2017 for school. I came to UND, and I stayed after I graduated because of the community. The people in Ward Two and across Grand Forks really kind of wrote me in and have made me an adopted Grand Forks member, if you will. I've been really involved ever since I got here with different groups around the community, with elected officials, with business leaders, with, you know, our average citizens. And I've learned so much from them. And the things that we keep hearing is that, you know, while our city is grand, there's a lot more we can do still. We can work to make our community more affordable. There are things that we can do to make our community more accessible. And there's things that our city government can do to achieve things for our neighbors. I'm not a fan of grandstanding. I'm a fan of practical policy. I think city government should stick to that. Unlike everyone else on the dais here, I don't have a family. I am, I'm younger. I'm a recent college graduate, but I'm one day wanting to have a family. My girlfriend and I have only been dating for seven months, so I'm in no rush to do that. But it's in my mind, and I want to do that here in Grand Forks. And, you know, I think our city government and our community as a whole is in a position to, you know, serve our people today, but build a better community for tomorrow. And I'm excited to have those conversations with this group here and conversations moving forward. So thank you again.
Thank you, Matthew. We've had a couple of questions that were submitted around infrastructure. You know, we have a number of things that have been bubbling up over the years. I think Dana had alluded to one of them that he spoke about 12 years ago, and it's still there. So we've got issues around I-29 interstate exchange. We have the 42nd underpass. And then we have the issue of where and if a bridge is placed between Grand Forks and East Grand Forks on a southern side, or where that might be. I read the Grand Forks Herald article that a lot of you alluded to pieces of this infrastructure as being important, but I'd like to have each of your thoughts on a priority of what you would like to see addressed. So I hope that's a specific enough question. There's a number of pieces of infrastructure for consideration, and I think I will lob the question first to our incumbent candidate, Ward Johnson from Ward Four, and then, oh, sorry, sorry, there's no incumbents, sorry. Ward Johnson from Ward Four, and then we'll work our way from right to left within Ward Four, and then I'll give Matthew from Ward Two a chance to answer, and then Rebecca. We'll just keep trying to change the order up, so I'm not putting the same person on the spot. So, Ward, can I have your thoughts on infrastructure? Do you mind turning on your microphone?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that the I-29 interchange is necessary. I think Grand Forks is growing toward the south end. And if it, if it's anything, if it resembles what has happened with Grand Forks in these major construction projects, I think we need to start now. It might get done in another 20 years. I recall how long it took the overpass at UND on Columbia Road. It's essential. Grand Forks is growing toward the south. That's where an interchange needs to be to keep up with the traffic flow. If we're not going to tear our streets up, having people take these circuitous routes, and I know that Trish and I lament all of the extra traffic on Reeves Drive. It's a historic neighborhood, and we just are deluged with daily traffic down Reeves because of this bridge non-solution. Okay, so the 42nd underpass, I think it's a great idea. The railroad was here first, so I think we need to strongly consider putting either a bridge or an underpass. You know, I guess we have to look at what the money, what we get for the money and what the payoff is. As far as a south-end bridge, I've been knocking on doors for quite a while, and if I'm representing Ward Four, there's not a lot of support for a bridge going into either of the two proposed locations in Ward Four. It makes a lot of sense to look at this I-29 exchange and see where that is, because that's naturally going to be another center of gravity for traffic flowing in that area. But I have a lot of respect for these people that have built nice houses, maintained their property values, their quiet, sleepy little neighborhoods, and all of a sudden you want to put 6,000 to 7,000 cars through on 32nd Avenue South, and they're vehemently opposed to that, that there wasn't a one that said, yeah, yo, I think it's a great idea to put that many cars through our neighborhood. So that's where I am on infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. We'll hear from Harry next.
Yeah, given the issues and ideas that you put forth, probably the number one thing that we need to look at in order, I would say would be 42nd. We're going to have to deal with that. That's causing major problems for all of the people who are trying to traverse that west side of the city. And if we can't get, you know, the railroads to work with us, we're going to have to figure out some way of working around it. It's just, it's just too much of an issue at that point. As far as the bridge and the, another connection for I-29, absolutely. It makes sense that we move them down south. The city is going that way. The growth of Grand Forks is heading in that direction. That just makes the most sense, and it's, the bridge then should go in that place, too. There's absolutely no way that a bridge deserves to go in Ward Four anywhere. It's done. It's not going to happen.
Thank you, Harry. Tricia.
So the bridge debate, I think it's a big debate. I do live in a neighborhood with Phoenix Elementary, and the amount of traffic is just really unfair to those kids. When my kids walked to elementary school, they would go three blocks out of the way because they didn't feel comfortable crossing. And so I do believe we do need a bridge. We're obviously growing to the south end. I'm not saying I know where that bridge should go. I've met with a lot of people. I've done a lot of research, and there isn't a perfect answer. But if I am elected, I will represent what Ward Four wants. So I am excited to work for Ward Four. The 42nd underpass, I think it's definitely needed. I don't think anyone would argue with that. If you, if you go to an event at the Alaris and traffic is so backed up, and then a train comes, it just becomes almost unsafe. And then the I-29 exchange, I do, I do believe, too, it would be nice if we had an off-ramp that also continued into a bridge into Minnesota, if that was Merrifield or 47th.
Thank you. Move over to Ward Two. Matthew.
Thank you. I'd have to agree with a lot that's been said. I think the 42nd underpass or overpass is something that's needed and necessary. And as for the bridge and the I-29 exchange, I'd echo the concerns and think that servant leadership is something that would be definitely needed there. We need to hear more, the feedback of people that live in the area and across the community to ensure that we're representing them the best way that we can. You know, transportation, our roads, is, it's key to a vibrant city. And as mentioned, you know, we've seen a lot of growth south of town, and we continue to see growth all over. It's important that we keep in mind, you know, how are we navigating our city? How are we navigating our community? And when I think of infrastructure, I don't think of just roads. I think of our systems, too. So how can we expand, you know, our bus routes and our route schedules? How can we expand our bike share program? How can we bring in scooter share and programs like that, of which we partner with organizations across the city, the Downtown Development Association, the University of North Dakota, groups like those? How can we leverage those connections and those partnerships to improve the way we get around town? And safety, too, was mentioned at one point, and we hear that all across the community. In Ward Two, door knocking, we've had people comment on the need for yield or stop signs in, around the Valley Middle School area. You know, I think there is enough to say that we should be looking community-wide in our areas, especially surrounding schools, of what can we do to improve community safety? And I think that all can tie into infrastructure pretty well.
Thank you, Matthew. Rebecca.
So for Ward Two, I think the most important thing would be the underpass on 42nd. I do think that it does pose some sort of a safety issue for emergency vehicles accessing that part of our town. Living in Ward Two, I honestly don't have too many thoughts on the bridge. I do hear both sides. I know that just going right through an already established community probably is not going to happen. And, but we have a bridge on the north end, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think the, it would be kind of unusual not to bring up this next topic going into our questions tonight, and it deals with the Foo Fung Plant. And the question really is, what do you need to see or hear to make a conclusion about whether you fully support or would not? whether you fully support or would not support this plant to be built in our area? You know, I've read the Grand Forks Herald articles, and I think everybody addressed it in the questions, and in pretty, in depth, and I really enjoyed that. But what, a lot of you have said you haven't come to a conclusion on whether you support it or not. So, the question that we have tonight is, what would you need to see to be able to either support or not support that plant being built in our area? And we'll take Ward 2 first. We went with Matthew last time, so Rebecca, you will get to start off on this one, and then we'll take Matthew next, and then we'll go through Ward 4.
Okay. I guess the issue that I think of when I, when we talk about Fufeng is, I'd like to know where our food supply is going to end up ultimately. If we have all these farmers in our area selling corn to one specific plant that does have ties to Communist China, I would like to know what they plan on doing with our food supply. Also, I would like to see the contractors, or, I'm sorry, the contracts that they plan to have with local farmers, to make sure that they are going to be paid fairly, and make sure that those contracts are extended for a long period of time, so we're not giving this company 20 years of, not free taxes, but of tax abatements, and then they're not going to pay our farmers properly.
Thank you. Matthew?
I'd have to echo the wage point that Rebecca made. I want to make sure that, you know, if a plant like this is built, that those that are working and those that are contracted through it are being paid appropriately. Additionally, one of the big questions that I have and that I've heard from numerous across Ward 2 revolves around the environment, and how is water usage being handled? How are emissions being handled? And so, those are things that I'd really want to look into and think that we should have more conversations and more dedicated community forums. So often, our conversations about this plant are held at the end of four-hour-long city council meetings. That's not the place to have these conversations. Ward 2, we had a neighborhood meeting a couple months ago, and a large portion of that meeting was dedicated to this conversation. And while we didn't all agree at the end of the day, I felt like people were hurt. And I think that's what matters, is that we have these conversations. When you do it at the end of a four-hour city council meeting, people have likely turned off their ears by that point and want to say their piece and get back home to have dinner. So, we need to find the time to have these dedicated conversations. And I've pledged in my response to the Herald, excuse me, that in my first few months of service, should I be elected, I'd pledge to hold various forums and have these opportunities for folks to engage in this conversation.
Thank you. In Ward 4, we'll start with Harry, and then we'll take Tricia's answer and then Ward's answer.
Yeah, that is going to be the big problem. It's the elephant in the room. Everything that's been discussed already, the money, who's getting paid? The water, the pollution, the smell, national security, all of that. You've got a ton of issues that are all wrapped up into this thing. And it would, to convince me that this is something that I would have to go for going forward, you'd have to at least address a lot of those issues, because there's just way too many questions. Everybody has way too many questions on this issue, and nobody seems to be getting that answer, or nobody's getting enough of an answer. A lot of people are concerned about the water, especially last year when we were close to a, you know, drought situations. The money, the spying, I mean, you can take it to whatever depths that you want to go into, but there's a lot of stuff that has to be discussed and gone through on this issue, and I don't think that it's being dealt with in that fashion right now. I think, I think we're losing the citizens on it. And when you can convince enough of the people in the community that this is a good thing, that's when I would be going to say, "Yeah, all right, you've satisfied their concerns. All right, now I can go ahead with this."
Thank you. Tricia.
So, my biggest concern is the environment. I've always been deeply concerned about the environment. So, when this first came, came out, I had huge concerns, but after talking to some local corn farmers, I found out 120 million bushels of corn, North Dakota corn, is sent to China every year. And if you think about the environmental effects of it going from a semi to the rail, to the ocean, on a boat, to China, and then when it comes back, I mean, that environmental concern needs to be thought of, too. I think the smell is a big concern. I think pollution is also another big concern. I know that the ponds are covered, but does that really mean there'll be no smell? And if they say there is no smell, and there is, then what do we do from there? So, I'd like to see some policy developed on making them accountable for what they promise.
Thank you, Tricia. Ward?
I was the Grand Forks County Water Resources District Attorney from 1988 until 2004. Did legal drain 42, legal drain 52, all the legal drains in this area that protect us from the flood. There's a lot of paperwork that goes along with putting a business like this in this area. Echoing the sentiments of everybody, I'd like to see a full, comprehensive, unredacted environmental impact study, which I'm amazed would be done yet. So, I think that there's a deliverable on that that everybody is waiting with bated breath for. I'd also like to see the federal water permit submissions that have been put in in anticipation of their water usage, which, if my figures are correct, estimate that they'll use as much water as the entire city of Grand Forks in some instances. I think that's massive amounts of water, which echoes on what Tricia was talking about. I'd also like to know where the profits proceeds net, net, net is going once it leaves Grand Forks. For who are the real investors in this industry? The farmers are for it. I haven't spoken to one farmer that raises corn that says that they think that this is going to be a net bad experience for them, okay? But they don't live in Grand Forks. They're not going to have to smell the smells that some people say are going to come from this business. I'm skeptical right now. I'm reluctant right now. The red flags are going off in my head. I'm empathetic with the city council. I don't think that they had any idea of the magnitude and the vocal and visceral response that Fufeng was going to get. But I'll also tell you this, like Tricia said, I'm going to represent Ward 4. And right now, Ward 4 is about 80% in favor of Fufeng. They're either in favor of it, or they're, they aren't really all that interested in it. I have a 20% vehemently opposed percentage as well. And I believe those people need to get their questions asked, and I think if we can do that, all of us can make a reasoned decision. And I think it's a good idea that nobody has said, "I'm for it," or "I'm against it" at this point, because we don't have all the evidence yet. Thank you.
Thank you all for your responses. No, it's a very complex issue. So, many of you in your statements have referred to wisely using property taxes. I think they were, you know, I think everybody talked about that. But what, do you have any specific thoughts, you know, of areas where you feel that you'd like to focus on? So, it's kind of a general question about the tax structure, and a lot of you have referenced making sure that we're getting good value for our taxes. Do you come into this race with any particular thoughts around what types of services or what types of areas of the budget might need to be looked at in order to make sure that our citizens get good value for their taxes? So, I started with virtually everybody, I think, except Ward. I think you get to start this one. Always, Harry's the only one that I haven't started. Okay, let's, let's start with Harry on this one, and then we'll go to the right, and we'll come back for Tricia last.
I have not had the opportunity to go through the city budget and look at it, you know, dig through it, what is being spent where and how. But I have talked to a lot of my neighbors in the ward, especially some of the more, more of the older people. And even my neighbor neighbor come over and asked me last week, her assessment on our house has just got kicked up by 30 grand. And she was asking why? How did this happen? I said, "Did you get anything done? Did you have any of this kind of work taken care of, stuff like this?" "No." She fixed up an old shed, or tore down an old shed, and then fixed up what used to be a garage back to kind of a garage. There's where the money's going, or where the money's coming from. Now, where is it going? That seems to be the problem. And in, when you look at the budgets and stuff that I know Mr. Bocinski's trying to pull it out, and he's already saying, you know, raises for all the city employees and stuff because of inflation and things like that, that, that's not how my job works. That's not how my neighbor's income works either. We gotta, we gotta stop thinking that every piece of property is, has a money tree in the backyard, and I can just go pick a $50 bill off of it. The nitty-gritty part of it, you know, obviously, I haven't had a chance to dig into those numbers and get down to that, but there's, there's just, it's got to be addressed, because we're pricing, we're pricing young families, and we're pricing people right out of the city because of it, because of the way we're running the assessments and taxes.
Thank you. Ward?
Grand Forks has the highest taxes of any major city in the state of North Dakota. I've lived in Bismarck, spent a lot of time in Fargo. There's a big courthouse down there. Why not? They don't seem to be doing anything much differently than we are. So, I am asking myself, "Why? Why is that?" And it is a balancing act. If the city is going to have competent employees, we need to pay them the going rates. So, you know, the employee side of the spectrum is one of those things that we just have to bite down and bear it. What I do think is something that the council could look, could look at doing better, and I've been spending time researching on what the city has been spending money on that wasn't roads, bridges, infrastructure. We need to keep the city in their lane. We don't need the city investing in real estate and taking taxable pieces of property off the taxable. Grand Forks has a gigantic amount of property that is not on the tax rolls for one reason or another, because the school owns it, or the county owns it, or, but whatever, it's not income-producing for us. That's a problem. It was a problem because our school is very expensive in Grand Forks, and all of the school money comes from property taxes. So, I think, if I'm elected, I'm going to look at a measure to actually reduce property taxes for people that are senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Well, I do feel that the most...
Tricia, let's see if you have an opportunity to speak. Oh, sorry, I was going to go to the right, and then I'm coming back to Tricia.
Tricia can stop.
But we'll jump back to Tricia, so that we have all, all three people from the same ward answering at the same time.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you for not forgetting about me. So, one of my biggest concerns right now is retention, not just retention of young people, but retention of all people. We lose a lot of people. They, they just want to go to a bigger city, or they can't afford to stay here. So, I would really like us to look at how we can be comparable to Fargo with property taxes. How can we make Grand Forks easier for new families to come to, a little bit more welcoming? I think lower property taxes could help that. I do think the elderly, too, they, they shouldn't be forced out of their home due to property taxes. So, I would also like to look at that.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Rebecca.
Well, I think the most wisely place where we can spend our property taxes is obviously on our roads and infrastructure. I really have not dug too much into the city budget and where it's going. That is something that I would do more research on if elected.
Matthew?
Similarly, I also would have to do a little more, you know, digging into and research on our city budget to see, you know, how are property tax dollars being allocated exactly? One thing I know is that, you know, a low property tax helps all sorts of different people. It helps people across the board, fixed income, young families, you name it. And when I look at data and information, Grand Forks has seen an increase in individuals aged 25 to 39. But perhaps, you know, tackling this property tax issue will help bump those numbers up in addition to populations across the board. And if elected, I'd like to work with our partners in the city, on the school board, and across the community on how we can find a way to tackle this and make sure people aren't paying as much and are getting a bang for their buck.
All right, thank you. Our next question revolves around mental health. I think mental health is getting an appropriate increased amount of attention. Now, as somebody who would be representing the city, what could you do in this position to help improve the mental health of our community? And we'll start with Matthew, and we'll work our way back to Tricia.
If I may share, there was a time where I struggled with mental health. I lived with suicidal thoughts, and I sought out help with the University Counseling Center and utilized resources while I was in college that really helped me. And while I had that opportunity, you know, some people don't. And so, it's ensuring that we are working as a city to identify resources and making sure people know how to find those resources. I was a member of the Grand Forks Police Department Citizens Academy last year, and they talked about how many mental health-related calls they go to every year. And it shocked me. And so, if elected, I would, I'd be at the front lines trying to figure out how we could solve this, this mental health crisis, if you will. And I think it starts by, you know, promoting and expanding programs like Mental Health Matters and, and working with our different social services around the community to ensure that the needs of our people, whether it's in mental health, whether it's in physical health, or emotional well-being, making sure that those needs are being met. It's an incredible subject that means a lot to me, and I will be there every step of the way.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I feel that mental health is an issue that should be between you and your doctor. I don't think that we should be spending tax dollars on mental health issues for our citizens when we have multiple nonprofits in Grand Forks. We also have Altru, and those places get funding from the state, and they don't pay any taxes. So, I think that maybe we should just kind of support them, and they can support the mental health issues.
Thank you. Ward?
I think Grand Forks has an excellent record when it comes to the area of mental health. I think it's one of the areas where we really stand out. I think the collaboration between the psychiatry program at the University of North Dakota, the psychology program, in the master's and undergraduate programs, in coordination with the CVAC, Grand Forks County Social Services, Child Protective Services... the CVAC, Grand Forks County Social Services, Child Protective Services, Grand Forks Police Department. There's free legal advice. I mean, you actually get appointed an attorney if you are deemed to be non-copis mentis, and you are brought into the legal system. So I'm not sure that we need to do anything more than what we're already doing, and I don't really see that it's a problem in our city.
Thank you. Harry?
Yeah, I think I'm going to have to echo that sentiment a little bit. I don't, I, I'm sitting here thinking, what would, what have I come across that is an egregious problem that we have going on? I mean, we've got a lot of issues in Grand Forks with homeless, Northlands, and even just coming up here today, I saw a guy stumbling across the street, and his buddy trying to help him. Those are things that we've got to work on, and help those people get directed to the right care. And I think the city should be probably, as far as like the police and their services, assisting those people to get to the places where they need that care, and then making sure that we can keep Northlands and those places available and accessible. But I don't believe that it's directly the city's responsibility to care for those people.
Thank you. Tricia?
I think Grand Forks could do some, some pretty easy things to make Grand Forks healthier, which, which makes everyone feel a little better. Our Greenway is pretty awesome. You know, it's proven if you get outside and you get moving, you feel better. I think we could kind of elaborate on some of those. I, I would like to see Grand Forks a little bit more open. You know, I think our trans population really struggles right now. I wish Grand Forks could be a little bit more welcoming. I hope we could work together and, and welcome everyone to Grand Forks. I think there's a lot of things we can do to just make everyone feel welcome. Yeah.
Thank you. What are your thoughts? This will be the last question, and then we'll go into the closing statements. But what are your thoughts around the city's role in funding more attractions or events to make Grand Forks more of a destination city? So we'll start this time with Ward Four. I'm going to go left or right here. So Tricia, you want to get us started with this one?
Okay, can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. What are your thoughts on the city's role of funding more attractions or events to help make Grand Forks more of a destination city?
Well, I, I, again, I'm going to bring up retention. I think 20 years ago, you would find a job, you would move to that city for the job. People don't do that anymore. They, they find a job, but they also research the community. What is there for me to do on my downtime? You know, what, what else can I do? So obviously, coming from an events world, I, I believe events bring the community together. I think we can see each other's sides when we come together. I think, I think Grand Forks really needs to step it up with their events.
Thank you. Harry?
Grand Forks, right now, I, I see a lot of the, the events that have been coming around and, and, and being created. Tricia's Greenway takeover is, is a wonderful addition to things to do in summertime. I had a wonderful time there last year. And I think it was a great bonus to have that, and have that available. I've chatted with the mayor on different occasions about trying to do more with the downtown with winter and other things. We, I think the city shouldn't be necessarily funding these things, but helping to seed money, helping to, helping to get that attraction out there, helping the, the events that we can get created, especially if they're locally created events, and we can help promote that and get that out to the people in the area. That's going to be what helps drive that in, in and out people. And then take advantage of what we got. It's winter. We, you know, we can't just go inside for six months. We've got to try to start doing some more things like that, and, and using our natural benefits to ourselves.
Thank you. Ward?
I gotta agree with what Harry said. I'm a firm believer that governments should not be competing with private enterprise. I, I really respect what Trish and Jamie have done with the takeover of the Greenway event. I mean, I, I don't think there's anybody that would argue with you that it's the biggest thing that's hit Grand Forks continuously, and it's awesome. We need more stuff like that. What I would like to see is the city getting revenue back from those programs with regard to sales taxes and new businesses popping up because they're doing something like they do up on the Red River in Winnipeg. Seed money's a great idea, as long as they don't get addicted to it. And, and once again, I, I really despise the idea of city governments getting into competition with private enterprise.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Ultimately, I think if it's worth funding, someone will come and fund it. I do not think that we should allocate a bunch of our tax dollars towards funding entertainment, especially in the current economy. We have multiple nonprofits here in Grand Forks that can support these. Also, maybe the city could maybe do some matching of donations, or help locate seed money.
Thank you. Matthew?
Thank you. I think there is a place and a space for city government to be involved in funding, you know, events and, and happenings around town. What that value looks like, I think, depends on the project. I think one thing that the city council would have to consider is, you know, what is the economic benefit? We're talking about, you know, what kind of money comes back? What's the economic benefit of the city being involved in this event? I by no means want to have the city compete 100% of the time with, with other private businesses and organizations. As a matter of fact, I think we should be working with them to lay the ground for them to host these events, and provide space, whether that's in events or working with planning and zoning to free up space for new businesses, large and small alike, to come here and thrive here, and provide our neighbors and our residents with an, an awesome rhythm of events. I think we have incredible opportunity in our fall, in our spring, in our summer, but that winter drops off. So how can we, as a city government, work with our partners across the city to foster a new and improved rhythm of events?
Thank you all for your answers. Now we will move to the closing statements, a one-minute closing statement from all the candidates. We'll start with Rebecca and Matthew, and then we'll work to Ward, Harry, and Tricia. Okay?
I did not prepare a closing statement, but I just really hope that everybody gets out and votes, even if it's not for me. I really think that it's important that we all start standing up for how we feel the city should be ran.
Thank you. Matthew?
First off, I'd like to, once again, thank you all for being here and for the opportunity to echo Rebecca. Regardless of how you vote, whether it's for Rebecca, myself, for Tricia, Harry, or Ward, go out and vote. Primary elections historically have low turnout. And I'd love to see a bunch of people at the polls, whether that's voting early or voting on June 14th. You can find out more information on voting early at the O'Leary Center on the city's website, if you search elections. And you can also find polling locations for Election Day on June 14th. Again, my name is Matthew Turnus. I can't wait to have continued conversations with the two weeks remaining in the election. You can find my campaign on social media, MatthewTurnusForWardTwo on Facebook, or on Instagram, TurnusForTwo. That's T-E-R-N-U-S-F-O-R, and the number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward?
Thank you. Thanks again for coming. I really appreciate the folks that came out and took time to hear us tonight. If I'm elected, I am going to represent Ward Four. I think that's what my job is. And I, and my job will be to have an open door to the constituency in Ward Four to bring their grievances, let me know if we're doing things right, tell me what they feel about how city government is, is working for them. I plan to vehemently oppose any bridge going into Ward Four. I'm not going to change my mind on that. I, I think it's a bad idea, and I think it would be detrimental to our neighborhood. And, and there is where I will represent Ward Four to the T. I will fully fund our fire, our police, and I am your conservative choice if you want to vote for a conservative person. I'm economically conservative, fiscally conservative, socially conservative. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry?
Thank you for putting this on, letting everybody else, everybody get up here and have a chance to, to speak on some of these issues. A lot of good ideas floating around here, you know, maybe we should have a committee ward can of groups. Instead of just having one person, we could have all three of us working together on something, and, and putting all these different ideas together. I'm a, I'm just a regular Joe. I'm a, I'm a working-class fool. I just get up and punch clock like most of the people in this city do. And I think that the city council has lost touch with that. And I'm hoping to bring some of that common sense and that regular working-class ideals back onto the council, so that we can maybe represent the large majority of Grand Forks citizens in the way that they work and live.
Thank you. Tricia?
Well, I want to say thanks again for having me. I'm going to try and talk long enough for Barry to give me a yellow piece of paper. I, I am very approachable. I feel like anyone can come talk to me. I'm not going to close the door on anyone. I, I am also financially conscious, and I'm also a creative problem solver. So I feel like I can come to it, to the council. As a small business owner, we have 30 full-time employees and 200 part-time employees. I'm used to talking to a lot of people. I have no one to complain to, so we always have to solve our own problems. So I think that, that's something that will work hard for Ward Four. So I appreciate your time.
Well, I'd like to thank all the candidates. I think we had a nice round of questions from our audience to try to touch on a number of different issues. I think there's a lot of areas where there's agreement, and then some areas where you can draw some differences. So hopefully that was helpful for the audience tonight. On behalf of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I'd like to thank you all for, as Dana had said earlier, sticking your necks out and, and taking this time to learn more about the community, and eventually, some of you will represent our community in our chambers, sorry, at our city council level. We'd also want to recommend everybody to go out and vote. And it is, it is very important that you get out on that second Tuesday of June, and get out and vote. So thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.